No, and as opposed to a commercial property, but yes, we'll be subject to the same rules and regs.
Okay. And what about recreation as far as like in the creek? Or do you, do we think we're going to delve into it at that level to where people won't be able to recreate dinner near the spring?
I would, how can I answer that?
Don. Yeah.
When, when we think about Barton Springs, for example, Barton Springs uh is a major attraction to people. And they have, they have mitigated that by attracting people away from the springs. Uh rather than telling them they can't go to them. And so they have protections in the springs. Unless something goes on that they temporarily close Barton Springs 24 hours. Of course, these springs get out a lot more.
It's, it's no different than the Kamau Springs and the Broncos on the Kamau River. And, and I mean, there are four hundred thousand people that float that river every year. But I guarantee you, when you go to building dams, docks, and then doing land improvements alongside, there are permitting requirements you're going to have to go through. And, and, and they're federal permitting requirements, not just state permitting requirements. And there are going to be land development requirements as far as types of materials, uh what all can be done and review processes that are going to slow things down for folks in that area, including the village. Again, we're not exempt at all.
The only thing that I will tell you is that, and Don is, is going to be looking at those, that my request is uh part of uh to, to mitigate the Georgetown problem. They actually opposed to going and doing a full-blown HCP. They simply took the defined area where the proposed critical habitat for them has been uh referenced. And they built an ordinance that was more about uh protecting the springs by streets and gutters. And you know, one of the biggest threats you have is the rain and the mud coming off parking lots there. That may have to be something that, that has to be addressed. But what they did was those structures to turn and move runoff away from their spring complexes were in the ordinance when somebody up or changes their property. It's not, it's not a rule that when they, their ordinance didn't, that they have to go do something. It's when they uh upgrade it, change it, improve it, have to meet these new, these higher level criteria.
That's typically the way these things work is it's, it's based on future improvements. It's not a situation where they come in and tell you to take action immediately. Uh in most cases, it's pure and simply as you develop, this is how you develop properly.
Dirk or Don, are there any federal grants or federal monies that we could, could ask for to help improving the environment?
Yes, there, there are, there are potential federal sources, uh and, and even some state sources uh for, for uh properly planned uh BNP's and things along those lines.
Well, what, what I'm thinking is I'm looking at upstream, the area behind uh Thomas Arnold to the south and on the west of the interstate, yes, that area there Dirk.
Okay.
If there'd be some money to, that we could grab to connect these folks into the sewer system and get them off their septic. Because they're right there at that first string dumping everything to the ground into the creek right there.
And that's Frank, that's the truth is, those are all, a lot of those are old conventional ones too that have been their legacy older septics. That, that uh are definitely a, a, a potent, they are a potential threat.
Answer that question is there are, there are funds out there to, to deal with that. Uh as far as the decommissioning of, of old systems and those type of things where, where we could provide some assistance to people in those situations. Keep in mind, we're talking about more than just septic though, and, and I think uh the runoff is, is as critical. Um you know, from a standpoint of water quality uh that, that they look at too. So uh I, I think those are things, you're exactly right Frank, that we need to look at uh in those particular areas. Uh as far as, you know, extending service, we know Johnny's is covered right now. Uh we know that Charis, uh we're, we're covered on, we're covered on Thomas Arnold all the way up to, what is that, Salado Oaks? Or whatever it is, that, that, that first turnoff.
Right.
And.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of those, the, the, the eight lots there or nine lots there that are along the creek. You know, getting, that the ones closest to it and then working our way north from there. But that seems like an area we would want to focus on trying to improve the infrastructure.
Absolutely.
And working with us, I can't speak from my elected board, but from a legal standpoint, if you needed cost share to get a grant and, and the village needed X amount of money, let's say fifteen or twenty percent matching for grant funds. Because it would be mitigation of potential water quality issues to the aquifer, we could participate at some level. Uh you know, they'd have to go through a decision process like you would. But I, I, I would tell you, uh because they're committed to this, I feel comfortable that, that they would want me to, to make sure I bring that to bear for Don. We wouldn't want to take the lead and go down a path to get all this done, but when you know the path, you want to go down. And, and you have two really good contacts, Chris Harper with US Fish is, is, and Amber knows him very well through our other experiences. And I think Jennifer Bronson Warren with Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. Those two people right there know where the money's at, whether it be Parks and Wildlife money or, or federal dollars.
Dirk and I, I think the thing that, the thing that we also ought to keep in mind is we're focusing this discussion right now on, on the habitat piece. But Dirk and I've had discussions with the folks at the county about potentially the county looking at maybe putting some water quality uh measures in place in their subdivision development guidelines and things like that. Because let's face it, a lot of some, a lot of the problem we deal with in, in, in that immediate area is coming it's, it's coming in upstream uh due to the lack of uh appropriate water quality protection measures upstream. Uh and we as the village need to be looking at potential water quality protection measures too as we grow and develop. Uh if we're going to be an environmental community, we need to act like one and, and that is provide the necessary protection uh pieces in, in our regulations to, to help preserve and protect. But I, I guess the point being, the county could potentially be a player in this situation too.
Dirk, you know, this isn't good news mayor, but it's unfortunate, it's uh I just, I, the, the real benefit is the things that have occurred by the village uh and the county and us all collectively and then in the sewer plant, I think puts us in a much better position than we could have ever been if we, if we had, had not had, had that time to accomplish what we've accomplished.
That's an understatement.
Yes, I agree Dirk. Um Don, I'm wondering, this idea that you had uh doing a, either a town hall or a meeting where people, and I think you would have a number of people come who are very interested about the environmental side and the springs and the salamander to come. And from there, we get a working group that will be able to, again, put some of the ideals that Dirk has presented us tonight and then go forward with that. What do you think?
Well, no, I, I think that's what Dirk and I've talked about. It's, it's, I think we need to put these people on notice. I mean, there's not a lot, we can tell them at this stage of the game other than presenting the history lesson. Uh but we need to give them at least an understanding, you know, of the fact that, you know, there's some things potentially coming down the pipe that could directly impact them and impact their property. Um and that they need to be in tune and aware and when they come out, uh they need to be diligent in reviewing those. I think you need to have a, a, for lack of a better phrase, a pre-release party. You know, where, where they get notified and, and we meet with them. And then once the uh, once the uh plan is released, we can obviously have another meeting with them and go in, in much greater detail and probably have some folks from Fish and those types of folks come down and, and brief them and give them more detailed uh example and, and information.
So I have another question. I had to stop wait for a whole second. Um and so I missed a minute or so. Um so as far as the, the design of the area, and I know that it probably won't end up looking like this little circular, hopefully um area that the proposal going forward that we're going to look at topo and things like that, you know, is some, some other inhibiting factors that um but when do, when does the coalition feel like they're going to have a plan that would be presentable to those landowners?
I don't think the coalition has a, as in my opinion, based on our original, the coalition's purpose is to come together to collectively use our resources to, one is uh get baseline data from 2014 on. Meaning what's the water quality yesterday and what it is it is today and are we, are we getting worse or are we improving? Same with uh, with our species assessment. So we've been, we've been sharing in our, uh, our resources to come together with the science. I think, I think a plan needs to not be, because the county is, has a larger responsibility, we have a larger responsibility. I think what we would, would say is that, that who, once we get a better feel for what's the, what's the so what of this designation, whether it's real big or real little. And then as you all have that strategic plan forward for the village, what's the implication in that? In other words, do you have a plan for Pace Park? Uh one of the comments was made by US Fish to me one time was, don't put barriers for people to get in the creek. Go down here on your public lands and, and make that appealing and appeasing to people and they'll be drawn more to that than they are to the springs, to the sensitive springs. So, and, and hopefully this, this area to the south of it may not necessarily be part of the critical habitat. When you look at the topog, it's hard for me to understand why is this area all the way out here important because we, we, our research has showed that the water flows through the aquifer system this way. And it comes downtown from other springs this way. So this area down south of the springs shouldn't be critical habitat.
So that was the question though is, you know, when the data, you know, the powers that are on the coalition, because I mean, there's so many great minds working on that and great scientists, that they have an idea of what they think the map should look like. And so I'm not saying that they would come up with a, um, a formal proposal, but you know, can we take each person's idea of what that area would look like and put it together on a map? And you know what I mean? So we have a starting point.
In other words, are they, are you saying before the feds make their decision, offer a proactive alternative?
Yeah, at least have one in our hip pocket to where we can say, um, you know, we're going to send this up as a, hey, did you think of this with maybe just a, a page or two? Just to kind of have it in their mind when they're working on that, that final plan. Because you know, we've done that on, on the Fort Hood side before and it's, it's, a lot of times works in our favor because they're only human too and they're only thinking of certain things. And so if we could put our heads together and come up with some sort of idea of what a map may look like based on that science beforehand, it may work in our favor.
Well, I think the key, the key operative phrase there is based on the science, based on the science the coalition is through. And, and translation, you know, we, we've got more bullets than our gun at this stage of the game. So I fire a warning shot and let them know this is what our thought process is.
Right. I'm not talking about, you know, putting a fifty-page document together, but a page or two of why we're thinking what we're thinking based on, you know, this list of research, it might, it might work in our favor.
It's, and it's uh, you know, the, the sad part is if I'm the person who owns a really beautiful pristine spring and this happens, I, I wish I didn't own it. I mean, that hap, that, that ultimately happens to people sometimes. That because they have, they have the fear of a potential taking by, by their customers or anything they do on their property. And so uh that's also why those people need to be a part of it. I, I don't know the, from my standpoint, I think it, I, that, the smarter minds, I, like Dr. Yelderman, uh Pete Diaz, who's done the species assessment for us, I know he works for US Fish, but he's over in the science division with Texas State University. And he and Dr. Nice are just incredible people. And they're very uh, uh, they're very scientific in their assessments. And they've always said to us, they get excited every year, the more, and Pete wants to come and present to the, to the collective partners, kind of give an, an, an update, not just of 2019, but what have we learned from 2014 on? Because we've learned more about this area as compared to all the work that's been done south of us in less time uh than was done back in the day when the Jolleville and all that, all that hit Colmel Springs and Barton Springs and all. We are so much more advanced in the shorter wind period of time.
Well, and this village spent quite a bit of money in, in its environmental studies in advance of the wastewater projects too that can go into that, into that equation. So I think we've got, we've got a lot of resources drawn to at least, at least plant a seed in preparation for whatever they want to come down with and then, but I think the public communication piece is critical. I, I just think that's really important.
What I feel may, may change on this Amber is, and I'll just be honest, one of the scientific things that we know is, one is there's a cave well up here uh on the property on the north side of the, of the Stagecoach Inn that, that's direct conduit to the springs. I also know that the subsurface terrain and the big voids right in there are huge. And then we may see the pink outside boundaries shrink, but we may see the subsurface boundaries increase dramatically because they, they realize that's where, that's where it's huge and it's in the flood zones. So it's really probably going to eliminate any development in those areas if the subsurface critical habitat is expanded. That's those small gray circles. And those are, those are deep voids that we've seen that are monster big, almost like they could be a sinkhole.
Right. And honestly, those carstic areas right there aren't exactly ideal for building anyway. So I don't think that we're going to have a whole lot of problem with, you know, not wanting to build a huge infrastructure on it, something that's six inches deep.
Exactly, exactly. Uh well, I, I know that you, you guys, it's a long evening. Thank you mayor, very much.
Oh Dirk, well, I thank you, thank you. And I think Amber's got a, a great idea. The feds are not somebody we want to fool with. That was one of the nightmares that I have occasionally with dealing with the, with the feds. So I think if we can prepare ourselves, we can come up with our own plan and our own way of doing business and giving it to you. And at least they'll know we're thinking about it. We're trying to go forward with it. But uh I think this has been a very, very worthwhile conversation. And we owe you Dirk, bushels and bushels of thanks for what you did to help us cross Salado Creek and to get the plant into uh production. And now it's our turn to return to the salamanders and to help those guys.
Well, thank you, thank you mayor. It's been an honor. Of course, I'm a Bell County kid. Amber knows my family for forty years. My family's very tied to our grandfather and so uh we just, in, in, in the fact that I ultimately after forty years get to live in Salado. When you're a southwest Bell County kid, you don't tell the east side of Bell County where you came from, but but uh I, I got here as quick as I could, so did Frank, right? So thank you all for everything you do and I'll, I'll let you go.
Here's it.
Dirk. Thank you.
Good night Dirk.
So um my question is, is what is our next, um, what is the next step on this? Besides notifying the landowners, are we going to have uh Don and maybe one of the aldermen start attending some meetings so that we can get a, a way ahead and a plan to head this off?
Frank, I think, I think, I think what I think we would do at this stage of the game is, is Dirk's going to present to his board and I think we get a read on where his board's going based on what our discussion is tonight. And then the coalition uh hopefully will get together as a group and start working on the idea of the, the development of a position paper uh that could potentially lead to a formal response if and when we get the, the plan out. Uh at the same time, we start planning for a public meeting, the, the preview meeting that we talked about to start notifying proprietors to make them aware. So yeah, there are going to be some meetings and I think the coalition's going to need to uh start meeting uh, you know, on this thing at this stage of the game and start getting on early.
And the judge, the county judge wants to be involved and he has a contact that might be uh, he has a, a fresh approach to this and he really sees the bigger picture and has shown a lot of interest in this. So uh we'd be remiss if we didn't bring the judge and then a couple of his contacts that might even, we might even afford a professional consulting firm to actually help us draft up something in a, in a, in an affordable way uh that compiles that. That sometimes you just have to have somebody, it's, it's cheaper to get somebody to help frame that up. And uh uh some, some of those things we can come together with is hopefully when we get back to having normal meetings too. Good night all. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Well, do we need to put this in a form of a motion and to put together some very broad thinking as far as a coalition? And uh as Mike said, perhaps, I think that was Mike that said perhaps begin attending some of these or, or just a very general motion?
Mayor, I don't think you need any action tonight, but I think we need to move in a, in a positive fashion based on what we're all talking about. Uh I think we need to let Dirk make his presentation to his board and then we, we start meeting after that.
Okay.
Don, are you attending the coalition meetings or were you before this happened? I thought you were. So we've already got representation at the coalition meeting.
Oh yeah.
I used to attend before and I don't anymore, but I thought you had carried that on. So as long as we have representation there, you know, honoring what we're, we're wanting as a village, I think we're, we're good.
Yeah, and we've made a point to make sure those presentations come to the board as a whole too. Uh so you, you and Dirk the same, that, that's where we coordinated this presentation tonight. I just think it's a, we're at that point, you know, where, where we knew eventually we were going to be. And, and I think uh it's important we move forward as a group uh and, and stay in touch.
That's not.
Okay. Well, that's where we're going. Don, you're going to, you're going to introduce our next steps in this area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number D, this is the last one. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the development of a support program for businesses in Salado impacted by COVID-19. Don?
Yes, sir. Um as you know, the, the, the federal government is, has funded uh some small businesses in this instance. Uh and I think you will probably see some more programs uh put forth in, in the coming months to, to help uh our, our small businesses get through this storm that they're running out. Uh there's been discussion about whether there would be value in businesses stepping forward and, and also offering some local uh programming or local assistance uh to those businesses, not just that which is offered by, by the federal and state governments. Uh obviously, we're, we're not uh in a position financially to uh, you know, pull money out of our general fund, especially when we're talking about budget shortfalls uh to, to offer grants and things along those lines to businesses. Um we explored a couple of issues, uh trying to be a little bit innovative with FEMA and with the, you know, some SBA assistance and things along those lines that if we were to pull money out, would it potentially be reimbursable as a disaster expense? And the, the read we got back from TDM was that, you know, that was a, was a, it was an innovative question and an interesting question. Uh and then they ran it up the chain at FEMA and FEMA came back and said, they, they didn't think that while it is a, it is a first-time situation that we're dealing with right now, that they felt like it would be difficult to, to meet their standards from a reimbursement standpoint. So the question is what can we do, you know, as far as helping businesses? And we've had some discussions with the chamber and Laura Tracy uh about the idea of, of potentially maybe developing or working together in, in, in the development of a uh local business assistance center, uh business support center where we might be able to look at uh bringing in some consulting assistants uh to help small businesses individually in business planning, uh to help them uh if they don't understand the SBA loan process, because I don't think that's totally over at this stage of the game. It's a, it's at a halt because of funding, but I think there'll be more assistance coming forward. Uh so I think it's, it's, it's not yet done. Uh but to, to maybe help them in, in, in providing maybe some marketing assistance, to help them in, in providing social media assistance if their doors aren't open, you know, maybe some of these folks are, are maybe not as savvy in the social media end and they can probably make a little bit of money on the social media side as opposed to just waiting for a door to open. So we, we talked about that and, and our thought process is that, that, that there's maybe more merit to that than, than exploring the idea of grants and things along those lines. Um you know, would there be a use of that? I think it's something that could actually grow out of this disaster into something that could become a regular program that, that could potentially be offered from the village's perspective. Would it be expensive? I, I wanted to get your thoughts on it before we ran too many trails on it. I, I don't think it would be that expensive. Uh I think we would probably partner with a local university uh and their business schools uh and, and then bring them in and, and, and utilize their resources. Uh and it would be, it would be basically a, potentially a center that could be set up here at City Hall, we have office space uh where businesses could make appointments and come in and visit. Confidentiality is critical in these type of situations, you know, and, and, and people want to talk about their businesses. That, that consulting group or the, 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 the school uh could, could potentially look at holding general, general meetings for businesses as we're able to get together in public forums, if not virtual forums, uh and, and begin some training, begin some, you know, uh exposure to some of those who may need some assistance. Uh it's not financial assistance forum, but it potentially could be uh an avenue to get them on the road than maybe getting some money coming in the front door. Again, maybe a little bit quicker than it normally would. Uh but we wanted to toss that idea out or see if you all had any other ideas about what the village might be able to do from a standpoint of business support.
I do. I have a, I have a question. I'm not sure um that a lot of people in the village are doing it right now, but I've noticed um in other businesses like in Temple and stuff like that, people are taking, businesses are taking advantage of the fact that they don't have people in there right now. And so they're getting those, they're redoing, they're researching, they're building walls, they're doing construction to kind of update their facilities. So I was wondering if there was a way that we could waive certain permit fees right now um for people who want to exta, expand or improve their businesses during the shutdown?
Absolutely there is. There absolutely is. You could, you could do that very easily. Um you know, and that, and that would be, that would be very essential.
I'd like to encourage some sort of, of ability for growth, so those businesses don't feel like their shops are just sitting stagnant while they're waiting on their customers to return. So if there's any way to kind of um, to help facilitate that on our end to make it easier for them to do, I would appreciate that.
One, another idea that got kicked out was the form of utility assistance. Because let's face it, a significant percentage of our customers, uh our wastewater customers are directly impacted by this particular situation. You know, and whether we want to look at that, we still have operating costs we have to cover with the revenues that they normally would be paying in. But that's even a possibility if that's something y'all wanted to consider uh to, to look at some type of crediting for, for a month or two on their bills uh to assist them to help them through the hard time. I, you know, again, I'm not proposing that, but I'm saying that's, that's one other alternative that you could do.
You know, I was thinking that instead of actually um doing, you know, deferrals on the bill side of it, on the, the other side of the payment fee, um impact fees, is there a way to kind of push those out? Say, you know, if they owe another year, just push their payments out to where they can start paying them, you know, like three months and then just make it a year or whatever that is. So that, I think there, isn't that going to be your bigger cost is paying off the impact fees rather than your monthly utility?
Yeah, it will be, but keep in mind, all of those businesses that we're talking about aren't paying impact fees anymore. When they start to improve, it may trigger that, but uh you know, simple adding, adding a room to a dress shop's probably not going to trigger an impact fee as opposed to converting a dress shop into a restaurant would. But uh most of, most of the properties you're talking about are, are, are already going to be exempt from the impact fees. But you could, for those new businesses coming in, to try to promote new business growth, you could look at maybe offering a payout plan like you had for the original impact fees and, and for example, or something like that. Um you know, or I'd do that as opposed to waiting, but maybe, maybe deferring outward.
Have we talked to the businesses to see what their specific needs are? So I would um, I would kind of hesitate to make a whole lot of decisions until we know what the needs are. I mean, clearly people are, are wanting to be able to keep their staffs going. That's number one. But we can't help with that because we can't pay the money, but that's what those loans are for. Um but what are their other needs besides that specifically?
Rent, rent assistance, uh utility assistance. Our, our comments we're hearing from people and then also hearing from some merchants who say that I'd, I'd be doing more social media, but I don't understand it and it scares the heck out of me.
Okay.
Other comments, other discussion, questions?
What about the company that we just hired with our um website stuff? Is there any way that we could get, offer website and web building um assistance potential for some of those businesses that don't currently have a website, but that could potentially make money off of web sales?
That's exactly what we're talking about as far as this business service center. You could, you could lean on several of those services and, and include them. You could even get far into merchandising if you wanted to, to offer some, some assistance on that. I think it could be a, it could be a literal, I mean, it could be a menu, it could be a menu-based program that you would put together. Um you know, utilizing a number of resources. But that could, that could live beyond COVID. I really do think it's something that could live beyond COVID. I really do think it's something that could live beyond COVID. I mean, I think at some point, the Chamber of Commerce, when they get up and going, needs to really get more into that business and needs to more focus on funding something like that. But in the interim, they're still kind of getting up and going and, and certainly in this situation, the, the significant, uh, the significant role the businesses play in our economy, I, I think is, is important.
I think, I think that the business center is very, very good idea that you've come up with. And I also agree with what Amber is saying that to get our heads together and begin thinking of things that we can do. And maybe one thing would be to have some, a special Saturday and we really make it special. Uh, teacher appreciation, first responder appreciation, uh, things that would bring people to town that are sort of heartfelt and yet maybe give ten percent or fifteen percent discount to these people for the job that those have done. It would pay for itself in the sense that would bring more people to, uh, our village. But there's so many creative people we have in this village, so many people who understand real business. And I think your idea of a center and doing things and putting our heads together. And I also agree, Don, with what you said, cause we brought up the Chamber of Commerce. This isn't something that we want to do to compete with them, but to work together, uh, as a community to make it happen.
And if there, if there are subgroups that work with them or separate groups that work to support merchants, I don't think you exclude anybody. I think you try to bring folks together, uh, to, towards a common purpose.
Don, I'd love to leverage. I know we have lost, I know we've lost Chadley and, uh, I know he was funded with the HOX tax, right? So can we use some of those funds to, uh, look at doing some kind of assistance like you're, we're, we're talking about here?
Yeah, the problem, the answer to that question, Mike, is statutorily, those funds are specific in how they can be spent, uh, and they have to be, and, and I think you could probably argue that educating some of our lodging operators and assisting some of our lodging operators, you know, you can, you could potentially, you know, do, do some assistance along those lines. But, uh, at this stage of the game, we, we've had some discussions about those funds. You know, the governor has not waived those funds as far as the, the statutes relating to how specifically those can be spent. So we'd have to walk a fine line, but I think you could potentially, you could look at programs that could benefit local hoteliers that could put, put heads in beds and probably justify the expense. We right now don't have, at this stage of the game, um, as, as we talked last, at, at our last meeting, that, that's, that, that spigot is dry right now. Uh, and, you know, the money we have, you know, set aside right now, we're gonna need to try to hang on as much to that as we can to try to force some marketing when things reopen, uh, uh, and, and to help people rediscover Salado in that sense. But yes, Mike, I think it can be used for some of that.
Um, so I had another kind of question. I, I don't know exactly how it, it goes with the whole stay at home or shelter in place order, but, um, is there a way that we could get some of our businesses involved to set up, say one product they sell a lot of and set up one day, like on a Saturday, outside of their shop to where we could get people involved in walking around downtown, maintaining those social distances, but getting out and exercising with their families and knowing that these shops are all gonna be open. So for instance, one shop sells fudge, that's all they've got out there, no cash, you know, you have to pay over the app or whatever. There's no people touching anything, but have some, some shops kind of set up where, you know what I'm saying? Where we could get people outside and kind of enjoying the nice weather and, um, in doing something to kind of benefit all of the, the stores without actually having to open any of the stores. Is that still maintaining those social distance and shelter in place that we're talking about?
I think we, we may know a better answer to that question after tomorrow, uh, with, with, with the plans regarding how far the governor's gonna allow for reopening and, and, and what staging time for that would be. I think under the current order right now, I think you might be challenged in that standpoint. Uh, you know, but I, I think that after tomorrow, hopefully, hopefully that idea might grow some light.
I think, Amber, that's, in fact, I think that is just a tremendous idea. About two years ago, we did something like that and we're gonna have great sidewalks now to start it one end and go to the other end and everything is, is just set up where people can stop and see. So often we have something south or sometimes we have something north, but this would include the whole community. I, I really like that, what you suggested, Amber.
Something that we could get people outside exercising and walking and I just, I don't exactly know what that looks like yet. I'll be gonna think on it a little bit, but then we can get people outside, even if it's a car parade where you get people to drive from one end of the, to the other and, you know, your merchants have all their things out, you know, just on the side where people can see. I mean, something, um, just to kind of stimulate people remembering what Salado's all about, having those people out there.
I think it's a great idea. Any other discussion?
Rodney, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Rodney, you were.
I, I just encourage you to engage either the SBDC out of CC up in Waco, if they still have that. I think there's an SBDC office out of, uh, Round Rock that works out of, uh, Texas State now. Um, might wanna consider them also. Um, the other thought I had and I, I don't, I don't know how it worked, I don't know how well it'd be received and it might not be a lot of money in the long run, given the economy we've been in. Is there any way to maybe play back that money from the local taxes that were paid or generated from while they were closed down, but they were able to make sales like, like the restaurants and the food and stuff like that? It, like I said, that number's not gonna be as big as, uh, what, you know, Amber was talking about with, you know, some of the other infrastructure charges that they had. But I didn't know if that was a, a legal possibility or if that could be done at all and if it'd have any impact on.
You know, uh, the local share, that's what I want, that's what I, I wanna research legally, the local share. Obviously the, the state share, they're out, but the local share is what we're talking about. And I, I don't know that we would have, I, I wanna, I, I wanna research the legal end of it, but my, my gut on that Rodney is I don't know that you would necessarily have a restriction on what you do with that money. Cause as you said, it's not gonna be a lot. I mean, um, even, even the restaurants that are doing their stuff and are, and are doing reasonably well, it's still not gonna be a lot compared to what they normally would be. And, and we know what those numbers are and, and, you know, we could, we could probably look at doing some type of incentive package along those lines for those folks. That's not a, let, let me research that a little bit more, but it's, it's an issue, that's a real good idea in fact.
Okay.
I, I just think if you could do that in combination with some of the other stuff we're talking about, it, it may, you know, one, one little bit may not help, but when you start accumulating a lot of different things, then maybe it starts to make a difference to, to those businesses.
Yeah, the other, the other thing it could do is it could motivate the business owners to come out of dormancy, you know, and, and, and maybe get them understanding that they may get something back by getting back into business when they're able to.
Well, that's a great idea too, Don. I, that's really good.
I really do have a fear, I really do have a fear that there're gonna be some of these folks that are gonna be a little reluctant to come out even when they're told the door can start to open. And, and I think that there, there's, there's something's gonna have to motivate them to get going. And, and that's, that's, that little bit may be a motivation, uh, you know, that, that's, it's, it's a real good idea.
Well, we're about to have a new normal.
You've, you've already got it right now, Mayor.
I agree. It's changing us. Well, do you wanna, Don, do you have enough with this to discuss or you want to give you some feedback to begin working on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna take the input we've gotten tonight, some really good ideas and, and what I wanna do is I'll put it out on the next agenda that hopefully will, we're gonna try to put together a program that you guys have, have something that you want and, and maybe act on and we can move forward on it.
So you've got a huge plate with a lot of stuff on it, Don. So call on us and this is tonight. I really like Zoom cause I can see the expression and hear the voices and I can't do it up front, but I'll tell you, this is a very creative, smart, uh, Board of Aldermen. They, they've just come out with some great ideas. And with that being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you very much for your participation and have a good evening.
Have a good night, y'all. Be safe.
Good night.
Y'all be safe.
Goodbye.